During when they're there, you're gonna have, you know, not like let them to do it.
And this also, this also would allow say as myself as a coach to say, you know what? We're just following the cell phone free policy and they have something that they can follow on. I don't need to help to be coach. Yep. So say I, I decided like, hey, um, I don't want devices when I travel to the brawler. They're gonna be collected up front of us. You can have an idea to be with. So, and I look at our sporting events, the attention to classrooms as educational instructional time. So I would like to keep that in there.
That way you have the opportunity.
Yeah.
So should we say, do you want it to be by any of those?
I would say.
Like administration.
I don't like it as administration.
I don't either. Okay.
I think it should be left up to coach slash.
Teacher, coach.
Teacher, coach, advisor. Yeah.
Right. Not really bus driver, right? Well, because that we can't. So, okay, so by, by a teacher, coach, or advisor is what you're talking about, right?
No.
Okay.
Yes. I agree.
That's gonna be interesting for them, okay.
I, I mean.
Not arguing.
I know some of them will definitely, but then they're gonna, they're gonna push the limits. Can I imagine what you guys are gonna go through in the first two days of school?
And it's, you know, some of this has been from schools and surrounding districts that they've left that option up to their coaches where the basketball teams, if we collect them, the football teams, if they can help, it leaves it up to whatever they want their program to look like.
Yeah. And I'm sure that, cause I know there's some schools that were already doing these before. So I suppose that's where some of the
And that gives that coach, those coaches the level of autonomy where they can have control over them.
And I suppose the thing with, the season starts off okay, but it gets to be really bad.
Yep.
Then you have the flexibility at that time to say, okay. Um, let's see, where is it?
So anyone that page.
This was on page six then, the next thing that I see that they, um, the main heading of this one was under enforcement provisions, but it was letter number nine, employee use of wish like, obviously we are gonna pro, prohibit our employees. But I would like something in there like they said is to say, we encourage them to be very aware of the time or something. I don't know how we want to do it, but just. Um, this one, it was the, the main heading of it. I don't know if you have the original one. It was one, two, three, four, five, six.
Oh, no.
Uh, but the main heading was enforcement provisions. And they had number one, but then it was letter number G. Says employee use of personally worked on the communication devices. That's where we have an option if we wanted to also do it for employee. And my personal thought is I'm not going to. You know, they just put it in here because if some school would want it to, but all they get, when I watched that webinar that day, they just kind of said, maybe this is something I could tell employees is to be, try to be conscious that I didn't, don't be using it all the time or something. So I didn't know if we want to say something, how we wanted to say it in there.
Yeah, I also had to circle one through that and I, I guess I'd like input from admin on that, but that seems.
Yeah, yeah. Right. I didn't wanna prohibit it either. I just wanted it just to say acceptable use, cause I think we have an acceptable use policy.
Yeah.
And so if we just keep that first, just the one full sentence.
Unusual.
And then just strike everything that, once they have it there that says employees are.
Yeah.
They're okay with, yeah?
Yes.
Because yeah, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't want to prohibit it either. I just want it just to be, you know, that don't be ripping it out all the time in class now. Students are gonna, it's beyond that.
So this, just to clarify, this ref- reference to K A C B, that's for if a staff member or maybe.
Is not enforcing.
Is not enforcing.
Yes. Okay.
My other thing then, of course, would have been like on their, on their student. Okay, student accepted exceptions and just very much. Right away, the next, then they had a whole page. It was a whole page of about the infractions. I would prefer. Yeah. I would prefer that we not put it in the actual policy. Otherwise, it's a first year. What if you guys decide to change your fractions a little bit every year, then we have to change the actual policy. I'd like to have the, we could just say that the infractions are listed in the, you know, like the elementary and the personal and employee handbooks.
That's what I got from Mr. Lawson.
Yeah.
Before we say that again, I was a little bit.
No, no, you're okay.
Uh, the one where we're, we're on page seven. Where you, the one that I have, I have the highlighted portion, the district, they go, yeah.
Action.
That way handbook can be.
Or you, or we can do it as administrative regulation, something that we don't have to redo this policy every year. If you guys tweak your, as time goes. So I'm, I'm okay with student handbook. We should probably also, should we be including it in the person, personnel handbook somehow? Maybe not. I guess there's.
I don't think.
We know this, cause it's all, it's directed towards students.
We could probably just, um, maybe we do something to, one of those things that we highlight or remind a little bit when you do your, um, in service, those two days before school or something. And I don't want it like that.
That could be a little work in the personnel handbook about that section, but not the whole policy.
No, no, no. Yeah. So we'll see what's, we'll hit to that. So, okay. So I'm okay with, I'll have to print these out, but he's got there. So we will cross off. And yeah, I didn't want it in there either. So I'm just kind of wondering what they had, like the big things. I think the only other thing they highlighted one. That they just said for us to be mindful, cause they don't really know how they're gonna do it, when we get right before it lists all the different policies, it's basically the, almost the last page where it has annual data collection and documentation. They just said that one's going to be, how are we going to, the district must collect data annually. That one's actually in the law.
Which is really subjective.
It really is.
I just, I circled the log and I don't know about this.
It went through so fast. It went through so fast that yeah, they just, they knew they wanted it and they did it and, but yet it's like, we're all gonna have to like scramble through it the first year and so I mean, I just wanted you to be aware of that. We'll have to figure that out as time goes. If it's basically just getting together and talking about it. I, I don't know. That's just, but I, that's all I wanted to say about that one is just the highlight. Keep it in the back of your minds or something. We're gonna have to figure out how we're going to do that. Cause they didn't have any suggestions yet either, because they just scrambled to get the policy put together for us. And things everybody wanted to have it, buy their, as soon as they could. So was there any other things that anybody else seen? I just wondered what the ones that they had highlighted that we had choices on.
So the first one we did, that was.
Yep.
Yeah.
The other one we did, teacher.
Teacher, teacher or coach or advisor.
Is there anybody else who should be.
Yeah.
Included there.
The advisor would cover like your, what you would call your F, your F clubs. They would cover your freshmen, seniors, junior classes, your.
Well, if it's anybody outside of a coach, advisor, um, anything like that, then most likely not necessarily educationally, because whether they are contracted.
Right.
Otherwise I'm, I'm okay with that.
But this doesn't call, this policy does say other activities where students are under the supervision of the school, whether on or off school premises. So it's pretty broad. It's pretty.
Yeah, it says may be. So that, that's where it gives them. Otherwise that was, this is the only thing I seen.
So this section where it says the district may develop and enforce specific limitations, that would be on page four. Nope. Yes.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Following. So it says may develop. Are these, so are these something that we're following or are they? I'm all unclear what this is trying to say.
I, I just think that this is saying that's where we can, if we have maybe any limitations over and above. Or telling us that that's where we can do administrative regulations or the rules that we don't have to have them in here.
So I guess my question is, should that actually be in the policy? Or not?
I don't know. I guess for now I felt like we should follow.
Right. But that, because it says may develop.
Right. That maybe we have to change something or you know, like as the year goes or something or other. I don't know.
So you're saying Vanessa, that we could potentially add to this list of.
Well, what I'm, what I'm asking is, are we following those six things?
And I guess I kind of like that it leaves it a little bit open because what if we do want to change something, they can, they can do a little bit different limitation or something. And I don't, otherwise if we say it only has to be these, then every time they want to make a little change to it, then we have to always come back and change policy all the time. That's just how I look at it.
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to say that it's unclear to me whether we're following those six things or not. Based on that word.
I guess to me, I felt like when it says we enforce specific limitation, that that felt like to me was it was over and above.
That's where the, um, guidance or the verbiage in both the elementary, high school handbooks would kind of cover that, I would say.
Like if they were doing something over and above this, then they could have those in their handbooks or something, or say if you.
So you're saying we are following those things like based on this policy?
People have to be.
Yeah.
Because that's kind of what they, what the law wanted.
Uh, not this part. This part wasn't the law.
Saying we are gonna prohibit, prohibit using any devices and technology to violate the school conduct policy. Students to photograph or video, so that's the requirement. Obviously we are students. To photograph or video record inappropriate content. I mean, a lot of these things are also, we're under the acceptable use policies, I think. So we are doing them. Trying to catch them. I feel like those are all things. Some of those things we were already doing before as far as.
Yeah.
Taking pictures and you know, all those different things anyway. So I guess why not put them also in here too?
Well, my big question was number two. I'm not, I'm not so certain about that one, but.
Well, having, having that in there, because we have exceptions in there. Number two is.
That's true.
You know, if we didn't have exceptions in there, that would not be good. Having the exceptions in there, we have upcoming or something and we want, we have kids in certain.
Right. I guess I won't be, I won't be surprised that maybe in two years or so, it might be tweaked a little bit again or something. I don't know whether they just wanted to hurry up and do that. Thank you. Okay. So we're good to go ahead and move. Okay. So we'll just that one. Then we're gonna move on to A, B, C, meal charge policy.
I didn't have a whole lot because after doing a deep dive, I realized that most of the changes aren't here. We have no choice. Then it took a little bit to figure out to refer to debt collections because yeah, but we can do that.
So we're gonna do like they, I guess I'm just kind of going back to my thing here that it's okay to cross off where they have may.
No, I haven't. Mine's just not called.
Okay. Payment options?
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that one as well.
They have the word may cross out. So meal counts include, so.
Do we have online payment and automatic payment?
Currently.
No, we currently don't.
So we have to have may in there or face those out.
Right. Because otherwise we take out online or just leave meal counts. In person. Yeah.
Well, probably you don't, but.
Right. Or else just leave the word may in there. So that if we do someday do online, I think that would be allowed.
It's actually pretty slow. Maybe not so much where business manager.
So should we keep the word may in there? That way if we do, that way if that goes.
Okay.
All right. Let's leave it in there. I was just going by the, 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 what do we have? The only one in mine on the back page on the balance, there was, they had, um, the second sentence, what's that? Students that graduate with withdrawal, condition, and you leave from a public balance that you know, come. They had the word at. At within forty-five days. Just, yeah, that makes sense. Remaining bill, remaining balance in the meal count within forty-five days of completion or departure unless they wish to donate to find that. At kind of didn't make. So anyways, so yeah, so okay. I'm okay with that one.
By specified date. How do you do that?
How do you, cause you, you have a kid withdrawn the 12th of October. You can't put a hard date on that. Right? Is that what you're saying essentially?
Well, it says at the end of the school year.
Either way, you can't put a hard date in that because you're in your school year, different every year.
Right. Unless you do.
June first.
Or, yeah, it'd have to be later than that. Cause two. And we go. Well, it says within forty-five days. So.
Up, up there. Yeah. So.
Isn't that the same?
Yeah. So would they even? May receive a fund or anything. So maybe we should, somehow.
Can we just not say by specified date?
Must be submitted to the district office period.
Right. Yeah.
Well, I think, I think.
Or say within forty-five days.
Well, this one with the specific date, the one above it is talking about your graduate or withdrawing students.
Yeah.
This one would be continuing. So for example, if I have a student, a freshman, and decide, oh, they're gonna go home, but we can drive a sophomore.
Yeah.
They can, he likes to withdraw that. But.
Oh, I know in the past one time, there was a student at the end of each year would always want all their money paid out, the parent would.
Yeah.
And even though the next year they started up and they had to pay again, they just did not want that money to sit there for three months.
So can we do within fifteen days or something or thirty days?
Thirty or, yeah, whatever. Instead of by specific date, go within thirty days.
Yeah, I think so. Otherwise I was okay with anything else. Did you see anything else? Okay. All right. To go to the board, then we will do G A C G, learn carefully where. Okay. What did you specifically say in here?
So this one, we can go back to this, but what does this apply to? Cause I thought, we thought we should, we didn't even know if we should have this. Only if the district offers credit for educational. So I'm trying to be.
But it's a required.
Yeah.
But, but only if, only if we offer credit outside of the question. So I'm trying to determine if co-op also do this. And if it does, I think we need to do some work on co-op. Cause does, do all these co-op people get subject to a background check?
I wonder if this was more like if we, if not co-op, it's more like if they interned or.
So I know there's some that offer credit. So for example, if it's not through co-op, but they're working at the hospital or they're working there, that they allow credit for those hours. Certain schools have policies and that.
Like if we would have like a health occupations class and yet they're working as a CNA, maybe they would be, that some of those hours would be subject to credit.
Well, even if, even if we didn't offer any course like that, but they're working at the CNA, that we could give them some help of credits. So, because this would be, this is through sponsoring entities. So this would be that the company is sponsoring the educational experience, not the school. So co-op doesn't fall under that.
So in my opinion, does that mean that this doesn't apply to us and we shouldn't have it?
Currently it doesn't apply to us.
Right. I just didn't know that if it was a required one that we have to have it, just to say someday.
But why would they say only adopt?
Yeah. So I guess. So for now, should we just? So should our recommend, recommendation just be for now, let's just say we're not gonna do it then. Okay. Don't. So with this one, is that what we will do? And we just won't move this one forward and then it just drops? Cause do we currently, cause I don't think we currently, shoot, I should have looked. Do we currently have this one? Because if we don't, then if we just drop it here, it doesn't move on and it never gets. Well, I just can't believe in like an old, like old, old policy. Well. Minus old, but this is the top two.
Now this says adopt, which I'm interested in because.
We didn't have one in the past.
I assume not because it doesn't.
Yeah. Yeah. So let's just, we won't move it on. We'll just, it'll just drop that. All right. That one, let's move on to G B B A. Oh, yeah.
That doesn't apply. Must they pose other.
Yeah, I guess we could. I'll do that one on the long. Okay. All right. What was? Guest speakers, I think.
Yeah, we were, the one we were waiting for admin input.
Right. Let's do what you guys think about this.
If we should tweak it to, I mean, because this to me indicates that every time a classroom has a guest speaker.
Right.
It has a, let me notice and all that.
The time part, I think we, I think it was more so when it started at the bottom. I mean, one of, like the middle of the page was says, if the principal approves a teacher's request for guest speaker, the is that one more. But this one up here, I get that says they show speakers who advocate unsanctioned illegal acts, the topic must have a direct and demonstrable link. Um, the speaker has the education or experience. I mean, I don't want some of those things that they. It's not, so I think those things are kind of okay. I think what it, it started being in the question is that second part, those, if the principal approves a teacher's request. That's kind of where I think it means that's fuzzy.
Right. Well, I think, yeah, like providing notice of the presentation. So you know.
Right.
I'm, yeah, I think you can, number one, you can remove that first.
Sentence.
Yeah.
Yeah. Otherwise, yeah. We'd have to go there specifically. I think, oh, that doesn't apply in this case to math.
So this isn't talking about to the whole school at all. This is specifically a cool read. For a teacher request, is it?
Yeah.
One. Yeah. So, okay. However, if the speaker is addressing a confrontational or a controversial topic, then they should be noticed.
Well, that's where it says the principal shall inform parents the option of opting.
Okay. So then. Acting your child out of the presentation.
So then they'd have to know this, I'm gonna, yeah, yep. I like that. That works.
So, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kelly, on this, but like, so say for example, you have a heart freak coming in to talk to a economics class about whatever. Obviously not much of a controversial side topic there. Well, you would hope not.
Yeah.
But on the flip side, say for example, you have somebody coming in, a parenting class to talk about abortion. Option, that kind of thing. That's more of a controversial topic where we would notify parents and.
Exactly. So maybe instead of totally, get rid of that sentence, so we should say.
Well, we're thinking covers it where it says, if the speaker addresses a controversial topic, the principal.
Sure. They just let him opt out of it. Yeah. But I was thinking if we don't even.
Because I can't give the option to opt out of that one.
Right. Yeah. So, okay. So we just drop that. Uh, in the middle where it says, if the principal approves a teacher's request, blah, blah, number one. This, the very first sentence is that little bit, providing notice to parents of the presentation. I think the rest is.
Do we want, for number two?
Yeah.
Do we want to have that in there, like, in writing prior to the presentation, so? That we have to come up with a form that they have to sign, that I'm gonna follow this and get that on record?
Or do we just?
Inform them?
Right, if you get rid of that, in writing prior to the presentation, but just require the speaker to agree.
Yeah.
Well, just in writing out.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, agree prior to the presentation to the following.
Yeah.
Yeah, just those two words.
And then as a board, do you want us to keep a record, time, date, topic when we bring them in?
Yeah, I have a question about that one. Well, the only time that would get to be is if there was some problem or whatever afterwards. Help you? Or not, I mean, obviously, they're gonna know the teacher itself is going to know the date and time and things, I mean, because they're people that's in their.
Right, because it's not that we bring in speakers and there's never any good presence, so.
Yes, right.
Like, if we bring them in, say it happens in a math class, or they bring somebody in for banking and something was said.
Right, yeah.
They, they are in there.
So how about we just get number three altogether? Because a teacher would have a record of.
I would think they would have it in their lesson plan.
Yeah, I was gonna say it would be in their lesson plan, I think. Yeah.
Okay.
So let's just skip number three. I think.
Just try to keep this closer, overly difficult.
Okay, we'll, we'll, and that one, we'll pass that one on, okay, and then.
So we don't, I don't think we should look at D B A until we get to it here.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's fine.
That was my reason for.
So, okay, so. So let's do. Okay, we can wait, can do D B A at the same time as.
Then what's our status on getting this free done, is that?
I think we're kind of on point to make a change.
We're just waiting until.
Make a change and then we'll, probably find, you know, find someone that can type it up or whatever or something for us, because.
Well, Mr. Everett, listen.
Right.
Could we go to current?
We're gonna try to, yeah.
Yes, yeah. Visions, philosophy, missions, objectives, I think, or that stuff. Or this is first thing or whatever that you want to look at, or this or something. I guess, I think a lot of.
We've had too many extensively last year, I think.
Right, yeah, and we had.
Oh, I gotta remember where are. I guess my, my number one thing is specifically.
Hey, there's two different, certified in there. So what page or what are you on?
Well. Okay, that's the second thing.
See, we can't, yeah, we can't touch that one. That's there, rules. This one of them here on the page that, up above where it has number thirteen, where it has grading procedure. Oh, let's see here, one, two, three, four paragraph above that, it's a big paragraph.
Which section are we going?
Um, just look for grading procedures, number thirteen.
There's some page towards.
Yeah, they're all so goofy. And then above it. Right there, and then not the one, two, three, but the, the fourth paragraph is a big paragraph. I see that we never did specify, let's see, one, two, the sentence starts off with frequently, frequently sending students from your classroom. We have may slash will, what did we want that to be?
I think you leave it as be slash will.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure that was, that was just something I had noticed in the part, I don't know if anybody had. And grades are still updated per school every Tuesday by noon?
No.
Okay, because that is below, right below the grading procedure.
So we do, um, we do Wednesday by four P M. at the high school. For eligibility purposes, because I run it Thursday morning.
What time did you say?
Wednesday by four P M.
That's what's in the high school, bit of a. I'm pretty sure that, that sounds like four or two.
So I think a lot of times we didn't like even like credit reimbursement for, you know, for graduate, but we didn't put a specific dollar amount in these things, because that way we always change the negotiation agreement every year, but we didn't always have it in here, so that way we.
Yeah, the number six says on Wednesday evening. And eligibility taken Thursday morning. I don't know, it's not a specific time, but.
Well, they can still do it after four as well.
Right, because it's like, like, four is a good. Yeah. Because it, it doesn't get, their eligibility doesn't get around to Thursday morning.
So, one of the page with vacation time.
Yeah, yeah, at least that's easy to find, because it has boxes.
It says July first and twenty twenty-three.
Oh.
Well, there must, there must have been a change that happened in twenty twenty-three.
That's right, yes, yes.
That's why that's.
Yeah, we changed numbers of days and carry over.
That down moved it just as you were saying.
Well, there's so much to it. My one thing that I had a question on, some of these things that we always, well, this is how it's done, whatever. When you go, oh, gosh, it was under section nine. Towards the back, that, that was the main heading, was section nine, it was general district policies for all staff, under number seven, holidays. It was just a few pages from. It's kind of right above the jury and witness leave. Jury and witness leave right above there.
No, I don't know.
Oh, right there.
I missed one of my pages.
Okay. Okay. Classified, okay. Okay, I get that for them, Labor Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, Christmas Day, there's the good Friday. Okay, Presidents' Day, the. I was gonna ask Zane about this, because I know there was a question this year, wasn't it about whether the parents and some of them or whatever, if they got paid Christmas Day and New Year's Day, or what it all was. And I know you just have this little sheet that she gave you, that you pay these on these days and these on this day. And I kind of thought, shouldn't we have that? You know, in writing or something, because it's just, well, this is past practice, well, nobody knows then. And then we had a question about that, as to how it was. So I, I get for classified and full-time. Sorry. Okay, Labor Day, Thanksgiving, Christmas Day, New Year's Day, Good Friday, Memorial Day. And Independence, which I know doesn't hit everybody, but that hits the full-time ones. And I get the Presidents' Day then, because when school is not in session, we pay for it, a lot of times we use that one as a in-service or something or other. But. Should we put something where? Because it was the non-full-time ones that were paid different ones. Should we put that in there, or should we not put that in there? I mean, this is for all employees, so it would be. And also, what do you consider full-time? You know, as a question, I think, it's like, well, I'm a full-time parent, but yes, you're only nine months of the year, you're not twelve months. They get paid different.
So essentially, what you're saying, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we should theoretically be being paid for Independence Day?
Well, Independence Day, I think, to me, the only one that is in the four is well, even Memorial Day, technically, it should be Memorial Day or Independence Day, but that would be for, let's say, our example, our janitors would be the only ones that would be here. That get paid for them, so I didn't know if you thought we should like break this up into different. Like, should we say this is what classified gets paid for, this is what full-time? You know, already people get paid for, and this is what part-time? You know, or whatever.
I don't know that we'd have to specify this for certified staff, because they're, I mean, that's all, spell out great.
Right, but I didn't want it to be here, and then they say, well, did I get paid for Memorial? I don't know, I mean, I know it's different, because they, theirs is different, they have a salary. So it's kind of really different for classified than in this four.
Right, but I think, I think.
So you have your full-time and part-time spelled out great.
Yeah.
On section eight, it would be page, like nineteen.
Section eighteen?
Section eighty. It's gonna be probably right in the middle of the packet. There, it's on page with a scheduled music concert. Right before hours of work, job description.
Yeah, after the fifty-four. What about that is?
After all of those epic long ones?
Yeah.
These boys.
Maybe it were twelve months.
Is that number eight?
Yeah.
And then what was that?
Oh, there's a full-time and part-time description that you were talking about.
Okay.
So if you like tweets, don't get them there, but.
Right.
Because you were saying, we, we want us.
Because, yeah, because some places being in there, we need to be, and I know this probably doesn't affect you guys, but it does, but this year was the first year it was really questioned us too, or what they as they especially with like parents, and I suppose it would also include your cooks.
Yeah.
So this is like all the.
So I guess one thing you could do in there, um.
Can I go grab that?
Yeah, I was gonna see if you want me to do it, I can grab it.
Okay, okay, if you wanna do that.
If so. It says, full-time employees work irregularly scheduled approximately forty hour a week and receive bene- benefits. What if you added through the duration of their contract?
Well, we don't give them. We don't do contracts for anybody only for classified, we don't do any parents, janitors, or nothing, because they're at will.
Yeah.
But I just wish you had this thing, and it was all different days for different people, and when he was questioned, it was.
So one thing you could do under holidays in there is, like. You could put something in there that are employed during the time of the holiday.
Yeah.
So like, your parents and stuff are not employed in July, so shouldn't we pay, you can say, whatever, your janitor are, so. So if you, if you add something in there whose hours coincide with the following date, or whose calendar or something that.
Right, so, okay, holidays.
So that's because, you know, this thing that she had printed off, and it said legal holidays paid, so maybe it makes a difference that they don't that they do not count Christmas Day as a legal holiday, because parents would get paid for New Year's Day, but not Christmas Day. But. I guess either the school secretaries and all of that, school secretaries, bus drivers, which I think, building head cooks, building assistant cooks and personnel professionals would not get paid for Christmas, but they would get paid for New Year's Day. Christmas Day a legal holiday also. I, I, and that's what I always thought, so it was so weird, because you know, when he had to look and see, well, okay, I pay this person this day, but then this person gets paid on Friday night, so. I just, this was the first time this year when he came and asked, I was like, let me see, and this, this was the thing, so it was hard. Because obviously, your admins, I mean, your certified staff, that was.
Christmas Day is a legal holiday, it's a federal holiday in the United States.
Yeah, so.
Oh boy, I'm gonna yesterday that. A I doesn't know how to answer correctly from that four.
Yeah.
Because I, I was trying to find the century code where it says that we can refer to the lunch. And it said we can't, and then I kept looking, because I didn't trust that. And there's a bill that says that we can't. But then I kept looking, because I was trying to find the century code section, it kept taking me to all of those things. And then I found century code, and it's not in there, so I thought that bill got that part taken out, but that's still what shows up.
Because it's presented at some time in history.
Exactly.
Yeah, because I know this one here, it was like, I, I totally understand, like, for example, your bus drivers and your parents, you think, yes, that was, did not include Memorial Day, Independence Day, or Presidents' Day, they had on there, but yes, technically, if we don't have school that day. It's all of it not get paid, Independence Day, I mean, excuse the Presidents' Day, they get it either. So I don't know, maybe this is a board thing that we need to, I just felt like he was questioned, and it was like. Why is it Christmas Day, and why is it only New Year's Day, and so we just thought this was something we were gonna bring up.
So they aren't paid on Christmas.
They're, yeah, not the, the school secretary, bus drivers I get, because they're only paid. Well, they get paid Labor Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, New Year's Day, and Good Friday. So it's secretary, school secretaries, bus drivers, building head cook, building assistant cook, and then parents, I don't get paid for Christmas Day, everybody else does, because everybody else is a person. But I mean, technically, to me, there are full-times throughout the year, they're just not, so I understand they don't get in the, Memorial Day and Independence Day. But why shouldn't they all get Christmas Day and New Year's Day? It should be, should be, because it's, it's a legal holiday, isn't it?
Yep.
So I just thought it was odd when we looked at this thing. I I get everything else kind of matched except for, and I get why they list Memorial Day, Independence Day, it's only for those people that are working, people like full-time, like the business manager, you know, the the janitors, and, you know, they they all get that. The other ones, classified, well, that's, that's in their salaries.
So we could specify the.
Or just, or just add.
Employees are paid.
I guess my question, okay, so that's fine here, full-time ones are, they get paid both Christmas and, or that, why, I guess, my biggest thing is in here, why don't the parents and cooks and things get paid Christmas Day?
So maybe what we should do is specify on number seven that only twelve-month employees get paid.
And then, we have full-time, so we should say twelve-month full-time employees, because I know we have that.
Twelve-month full-time, right?
Yeah, we have that specified someplace.
And then fix this so that there's more consistency.
Well, we, basically, the only thing he really would have to change on here is that everybody should get paid Christmas Day.
Yeah, because right now, the way that's set up is if you're not a twelve-month, you don't get Christmas Day.
Right. And I feel like a parent is a full-time, I get it's only a nine-month one, but but I I understand they're not twelve-month full-time, but at the same time, their job is, I don't know, maybe I'm looking at.
The holiday falls when they're, when they're essentially employed by.
I don't know, your window's too clean.
Yeah, so I get that, but then I thought, well, then on the flip side, then they really should get paid for New Year's Day.
Well.
I I I mean, if, you know, so I was trying to.
Right.
Like, that's, that's too mean.
So let's bring that to the board and add some to here.
Yeah, like this here one for all classified and salary twelve-month full-time staff, these.
Well, I would just, I would just say only twelve-month full-time get paid for Memorial Day and Independence Day.
True, we can say all.
So you just put the ones that all are included and then twelve-month employees will.
Yeah.
Also be paid for.
So I, what I did is I tweaked it a little bit where it says Labor Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's, and Good Friday, period.
Correct.
Twelve-month, parentheses, full-time employees will also be paid for Memorial Day and Independence Day, period.
So that way, we're saying that parent is a full-time, it's not a twelve-month full-time, but it's full-time, and same with your secretaries, and then that way, these people would get paid. So like. I thought they were both a federal holiday, and it was confusing for him, because when they asked him, he gave him kind of, no, I didn't realize we had this little box thingy, okay. Okay.
Do we have, do we have a, no, somewhere for bringing that to the board? It doesn't have to come to this meeting.
True, because since we already have it, yeah, we could do that, if you want to remember, we'll bring that up at the August meeting.
Yeah, let's see, especially if we're reporting formatting this personnel handbook anyway, it'd be good.
Right, and we are gonna have it formatted probably till the August one anyway, so he could put it in there, but then we could probably tackle all that first, and then that way, if we pass the handful of that later in the meeting, then I can bring it up, so he doesn't have to make any other ones.
So we're not going to try to pass this?
Well, is it?
The formatting isn't relevant.
Oh, that's right, it is not for tomorrow night.
It is.
Okay.
The formatting isn't relevant, but if we change it, we pass it, we can reformat it, and that's, that's all the same content.
True, and if, and if we, when we do this tomorrow night, we could say, well, let's specifically look at, you know, holidays, and then we could say that, hey, this is how we reworded it, so that everybody is included here, and this is for your twelve-month here, and that would be okay. I mean, because that would be passive, I mean, we're passing wording, we're not really passing a policy, because we could do it all at the same time, yeah.
I would, I would like to see these things.
I, I. We could do, I'll tell you what, we could do a first reading. We don't normally, we don't normally have to unhand it, we don't, but this one, let's do that.
I I feel like we have a situation going on where we pass things with amendments, and I'm sure that those always keep it.
Well, yeah, so we could do this one as a first reading, then maybe by August, he could have it typed up, and if anything is there, then we do it as a second, okay, that's good. Then not far after that, where it has holidays, which is seven, number ten, this is more jokes for ours, we're gonna have to, we all travel expense guidelines, we'll have to try and find out if there's new state rates. We gotta put the new state rates in there for like meals and also mileage and stuff. Thing was just minor things, keep going down, number thirteen payday schedules. Had you looked ahead?
Oh.
Uh, Friday, September fifteenth, maybe. Is fifteenth on a Friday this year? Oh, it's a Monday, okay, so Monday, Monday, September fifteenth. Oh, two thousand twenty-five. Okay.
I don't know about this simply, but I have to talk again.
Yeah, no, that's okay, I was just looking at then at the very last page, we gotta change the date. We could put that as a first reading to a president here.
Oh, is it Vanessa, is it the one that has to do with the sick emergency leave that has father, stepmother, stepfather, mother, and all that?
That's part of it, yes.
Okay, that's gonna be like fourth page from the back. It'll be number six, sick emergency leave with, uh, at the top is reporting accidents.
Okay.
The stage before meal and travel expense.
Yep, no, that's not it.
That's not the one?
No, I'm looking for the one that says, that top, oh. The one that talks about whether, or that they can, um, or that the superintendent can request documentation. So that part. I believe it's quite certain it's in here. I mean, like, that one's in here.
Did you say it's in this personnel handbook somewhere?
I should have thought so.
I think it's only, I'm not sure, it's just in. I think, I think it's just in the order of the agreement. And that's what I felt like, if it's in here, maybe we should put it in here, I feel, my personal feeling is that we should treat everybody the same, whether they're classified or not classified. But, because for some reason, I don't think it's in here.
Too, because it's what Luke can reference when he asked Dr. Harding.
Well, if you want to find that, like. I'm wondering, are we doing it again too, for some reason?
I thought it was under this section that was specific to. He was hilarious, though.